Item B, please.
Item 6B, adopt a resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report and the Measure A Fund Report on Compliance for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019.
So, Javon Grogan, City Manager. We are here for a presentation on our annual comprehensive report, in government speak, referred to as our CAFER. And so, that presentation will be joint between Keith DiMartini, our Finance Director, and we do have our auditor from Mays &amp; Associates. The City Council was provided with the audit as well as the management letter. And so, without any further ado, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director.
Mr. DiMartini, I know we've been waiting for this, and so have we. So, please go forward.
I have been, thank you very much. So, good evening, Council, members of the public. My name is Keith DiMartini, the Finance Director. It's my pleasure to present an overview and management's response to the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2018-2019. The objective of this presentation, this meeting before you, is twofold. One, to receive the comprehensive annual financial report and the Measure A report. And then, two, adopt a resolution accepting the CAFER and the Measure A report on compliance for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2019, which is an action before you this evening. The agenda for the presentation is as follows. Just want to provide an overview of what the CAFER is, why it's required, and why we have to report it. Myself and our auditor will provide an overview of the various financial statements found in the CAFER. I will provide an overview of our general fund reserves. We will jointly discuss internal control items that were discovered as part of the audit and our response to them, provide an overview of the Measure A report, our request to Council, and take any questions that you might have. So first, who reads the CAFER? It might not be the most exciting document that we produce as a city, but it does serve a very important purpose for many internal and external parties. Staff are required to present the CAFER to the City Council, and it's important for Council to receive the annual report to better assess the financial health of the city. Members of the public may use this document to learn about the city's services and its finances. When the city considers and intends to issue debt for priority projects, various credit agencies will analyze the CAFER and other information about the city to ensure that the capital that they lend the city is secured. The city has received very high credit ratings in recent years, partly because of the strong financials that are reported in the CAFER. Other financial institutions and external auditors will also review the CAFER as it pertains to their review of city operations. The city's independent auditor, Mays &amp; Associates, has completed the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2019. The Finance Department does prepare the financial statements in the form that are required by the Government Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. The preparation and presentation of the report to Council is also a requirement of the city's municipal code, which is why we're before you this evening as well. There are four main sections in the CAFER. First, the introduction, which just provides a general overview of the city in a letter of transmission. Second is the financial section, which provides the numerous financial statements and reports that report on the financial health of the city and the independent auditor's report. The notes to the financial statements provide a great deal of information and context to help explain the financial statements themselves and other trends and issues that are going on. And then finally, there is a statistical section, which provides a broad range of operational and performance and various metrics that again provide context into the city's operation. It's important to understand the difference between the budget document versus the CAFER. So this graphic attempts at doing that. The city's financial management really begins with the budget process, as we all know. After the Council adopts the budget, staff work throughout the year to implement the priorities set forth by Council throughout the year. And then, the CAFER is meant to report on the audit and the financial reporting of how the budget actually panned out. The budget and the CAFER are two very different documents. The budget looks ahead, it's strategic in nature, while the CAFER is more focused on looking back and looking and reporting on how the city actually performed from a financial perspective. There are some other discrepancies between the two, or differences between the two documents, such as the categorization of revenues and expenditures, and some reports are required in the CAFER but not in the budget. So it is difficult to cross-reference the two, but hopefully, we're able to address a lot of that in tonight's presentation and in the staff report. The Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, has established a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting. It was first established in 1945, and it really encourages municipalities to go above and beyond just bare minimum financial reports for your balance sheet or your income statement. Our city's CAFER has been evaluated for multiple different criteria, ranging from context and readability and formatting and such. I'm happy to say that the city of San Bruno has received this award for nine consecutive years through fiscal year 1718, and we have submitted an application again for the upcoming year. Similar to the financial reporting award, the GFOA has a similar program in regards to its budget presentation award. This was established 35 years ago, and it encourages governments to prepare budgets of high quality that reflect best practices and industry guidelines. And I'm happy to say that the city did receive this award for the first time with its fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Now I'll turn it over to David Alvey from Mays &amp; Associates, our audit partner, to discuss the audit overview and their findings.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is David Alvey, and I'm the audit partner at Mays &amp; Associates. And as Keith said, our job every year is to come in and audit the financials. I was requested to give just a little overview of kind of the audit process, just real high level. The audit process actually begins in my office with a brainstorming session between the entire audit team, and we look at the city's financials, last year's financials, by section by line. We try to figure out what areas are risky, and that could be risked due to staff turnover, that could be risked because of the environment that you're in, anything. And our risk assessment that we determine, we have to mitigate those risks in our audit plan. And the neat thing about our audit plan is it's a living document. It changes as new information comes into the limelight. If things turn out differently than we originally projected, we have to change our audit procedures to mitigate those risks. So we come in in April, and we do our interim phase. And during our interim phase, so this is before the books are closed, we're looking at internal controls exclusively. We want to make sure that there's good segregation of duties. So the person that has custody of the asset doesn't also have the record-keeping function. So, kind of a bad example. But somebody taking cash receipts up front shouldn't be the one recording that revenue in the general ledger, because things could go missing. So sometimes there are those segregation of duty issues, but we want to test the mitigating factors if there are issues that we find. And then, at final, we come in, and that's where we test the actual balances. We send the confirmations to your bank, we send confirmations to your legal counsel, we send confirmations to different organizations for revenue, and we vouch those against the records that the city has. And we also produce the CAFER itself. And our opinion date, so that's the date that we feel that the city has taken responsibility to report, and everything is completed, is December 18th, 2019. And our audit was conducted according to auditing standards generally set in the United States, and it's a government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United So technically, the only piece of the CAFER that my firm owns is the audit opinions. And that's on page one, it starts. And I'm pleased to say that the audit opinion is an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level assurance that CPA firm can give a city, so congratulations. You passed your audit. I do want to bring to your attention that we have an emphasis of a matter paragraph in the audit opinion. The Government Accounting Standards Boards comes up with statements every year that we have to implement, and a new one came out this year, GASB 88, having to do with debt disclosure. So now, in your debt footnote, you'll see additional language about what would happen to bondholders in case the city was to default on the debt. I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon, but it's now required for us to put that in the footnote. But the great thing about this, as opposed to the pension GASBs, is no financial statement impact, no disclosure only. And with the clean opinion, truly that is a testament to strong internal controls and financial reporting.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that. So now I'll take it over. Mike? Thank you, David, I appreciate that. So now I'll take it over and provide an overview of the financial statements in the CAFER itself. The MDNA, the Management Discussion and Analysis Section, should be read as the executive summary to the CAFER, so that's a great section to reference. Overall, the net financial position is a term used in the CAFER, and that's defined as the financial liabilities minus cash and other assets. In general, if the net position increases year over year, this shows a favorable financial position as it relates to assets being more than the city's liabilities. This is reflective, this is more reflective of a typical balance sheet statement that you might see in a private company's financial statements. The CAFER does summarize multiple funds into what's called the governmental funds, and that includes the city's general fund, also additional special revenue funds, our capital project funds, and our debt service funds as well. Overall, the general fund, so you can see the net position actually increased by $12.6 million to $138.8 million during the year. So a much favorable position year over year. The governmental fund balances declined by $1.9 million to $47.7 million in fiscal year 2018-19. This is mainly attributable to the $6 million PG&E penalty settlement that the city received in fiscal year 1718 as a one-time revenue that did not incur, that did not occur in fiscal year 1819. So if you control for that one-time revenue, it normalizes. The city did receive, realize modest increases in various tax revenue sources, and there were some increased expenditures from the city's robust capital improvement program and personnel costs from filling many vacant positions in fiscal year 1819. You can see here that the net pension liability, which is the city's PERS pension liability for all of its employees, actually decreased slightly to $88.7 million. And I have a number of slides coming up that will talk more about the city's pension liability in the coming years. This slide summarizes the assets and liabilities for the governmental funds comparing fiscal year 1819 to the prior year. The general fund balance has decreased by $1.9 million year over year. The major factors contributing to this include the additional liabilities from the net pension liability that I talked about earlier, the additional debt service payments that the city has made from a few items. One was the router service payments in the city net and cable department for their router program, and also controlling for the $6 billion settlement from the PG&E, which was a one-time revenue source for assets in fiscal year 1718. This slide here summarizes the major revenue sources compared to the prior fiscal year. Overall, you'll see that the government fund revenues did decrease by $2.2 million year over year. Again, after controlling for and taking out the one-time PG&E settlement money, which is recorded in the fines and forfeitures line here, you'll see it in fiscal year 1718 and not in fiscal year 1819. And there was additional tax revenues that the city realized from business license taxes and permits and other charges for services and use of money for property. Our revenue actually did increase by approximately $4.2 million year over year, again, if you control for the one-time settlement. This slide here summarizes the year-over-year changes to the city's major expense categories. As mentioned earlier, there were major, the major increases that the city realized in fiscal year 1819 were attributable to the additional personnel expenses from filling vacant positions, and again, the implementation of our very robust capital improvement program, where you can see in the capital outlay line, our expenditures grew by just over $3.9 million. At the close of the fiscal year, the city's governmental funds reported a combined fund balances $47.7 million, a slight decrease from the prior year. So moving on, this slide here summarizes the net position of the city's four enterprise funds, which I'll walk through just briefly. The net position in the water fund, it continues to be strong, and it increased by $6.5 million to a net position of $54.3 million. This was a result of additional revenue that was planned through the rate increases that Council approved back in 2017. And those funds will be used to implement the very robust capital improvement program in the water enterprise fund. For stormwater, the net position actually decreased by approximately $200,000 year over year. This is due to its operating expenses exceeding its revenues from the special assessment on the property tax roll. This was discussed at great length during the budget process, and the stormwater fund is projected to have a negative fund balance starting in fiscal year 2020-2021. So additional funding sources will need to be considered to fund the ongoing operations and the capital outlay in the stormwater program in the coming years. For wastewater, the net position continues to be strong. Similar to water, it did increase by $6.9 million year over year, again, related to the rate increases adopted by Council back in 2017, and those assets will be used to implement on a variety of capital improvements in the wastewater system. You'll see the cable enterprise fund, the net position did decrease by $2.4 million to a net position of negative $15.2 million. This decline was, again, primarily attributable to increased costs of the cable infrastructure and the operating expenses, which exceeded the annual operating revenues. And I do have a slide coming up which talks in a little bit more detail about staff's plan to address the cable deficit in the coming years. And again, it will be a combination of additional revenue sources and offering higher-margin cable business, internet packages, with combined expense reductions, which, many of which have already been achieved. So now I want to spend a little bit of time talking about pension. This city, the city continues to experience significant impacts from increasing costs of the retirement benefits through the CalPERS system. The employee retirement benefits totaled $7.2 million in fiscal year 1819, which we paid to CalPERS, and it's expected to increase by approximately $1 million in fiscal year 1920. GASB 68 was first implemented in fiscal year 1415, and it required that the city's net pension liability of our contribution in the pension system be reported and reflected in our net position in our financial statements. The net pension liability is the difference between the total pension liability or the present value of the projected benefit payments that we would pay out, the CalPERS system, and the assets. And you can see here on this table, this is actually a comment that I think Councilmember Medina, you made during last year's CAFER to try and summarize the net pension liability and comparing it year over year for the multiple plans. So we added this table into the notes section of the CAFER, so you can more clearly see what the net pension liability is for our miscellaneous and our safety plans and the year-over-year change. And as you can see, it was actually slightly favorable this year. There are many factors that go into what the net pension liability is on these actuarial reports, including the projected benefit payments that are expected to occur over the coming years, what interest and how successful the investments are with the CalPERS system, among many other factors that they use to prepare these very detailed actuarial reports. This slide here does summarize our net present liability, our PERS unfunded liability, what it has been in prior years and what it's going to be in the upcoming fiscal years. The graph to the left shows the trend from 2010-2011 through fiscal year 1718. And then the graph to the right shows what the city has to contribute and pay to CalPERS for the employer's contribution into the system, and you can see that it increases year over year through fiscal year 2024-25. So we will anticipate to continue to have to increase our contribution over the next few years. But what is really important to note is that the city's annual payment to CalPERS for the annual amount of the net pension liability, it is a plan. And it is a plan that is expected to pay it off over time. You can see on this graph here, what I did was I took the actuarial report, which shows us the plan to contribute to pay off the net pension liability, and it shows the balance of that, of the net pension liability decreasing over time and actually being paid off by 2043. So over the next 23 years, if we continue with the plan, we will pay it off over time. Cities have employed various options and strategies to speed up the payment of paying off the net pension liability much quicker, and the city is currently working on one strategy, which I wanted to provide just a brief overview with you right now. This is actually a key component of the comprehensive fiscal sustainability project, is addressing the growing pension costs and the net pension liability to the city. And so, looking into this is one component of that, of that plan, and it is setting up a pre-funding trust. It's called a Section 115 trust, and many cities across the state have set one of these up. And the trust allows for the city to pre-fund the normal cost contributions of the unfunded pension liability throughout the year and into future years. If available funding is identified, the city can choose to make additional payments into CalPERS through this trust fund process. It will ultimately reduce the number and the amount of future payments over time, and the trust can also act as a contingency fund that might help the city control for any future volatility in the PERS system. Staff are actively engaged with CalPERS on what are the legal requirements in order to set up the fund, the trust fund, and we will be happy to come back to Council and report out on the progress of those meetings as we progress. So moving on, I did want to provide an overview of the city's financial reserves. The city did, the City Council did adopt the city's reserve policy back in 2013, and the summary table listed here does list the reserves that make up the larger reserves than the financial statements. Overall, you can see that the reserve balances are at $26.4 million, which is an increase of $2.3 million from the prior fiscal year. So it's a great trajectory going into this year. The policy established that the general fund reserve, the city's largest reserve here, listed in item number one, that is maintained at a goal of 25% of the entire general fund expenditures budgeted, and we have achieved that goal in fiscal year 1819, and we are budgeted to achieve that goal in fiscal year 1920. The city had been steadily approaching meeting the goal set forth in the reserve policy, and finally met it in fiscal year 2016-17, and has met it ever since. I'd like to now turn it over back to David, who's going to speak a little bit about internal control findings that they noted, and then I'll respond to his findings as well.
Great. Also, we are required as auditors to make a report to the City Council of what we found during the audit, also known as a management letter. Our version of that is called a memorandum on internal controls and required communication. And it categorizes three different things. Material weakness, so something can flow through the internal controls of San Bruno and not get caught, something material. We have none of those. Significant deficiencies, this has been, a couple of years now, we've been bringing up about the, as Keith was mentioning, the deficit in the cable fund and the continuing years of operating loss. I understand that this is not a problem, that it's going to be fixed overnight, but we just want to keep this in this report, just to stress the need to address that, just to keep that fresh in the City Council's mind. The other item we have, another matter, is having to do with investment policy compliance. When we were out here during our interim testing, we noted that per-year investment policy, you can't exceed more than 38% in the San Mateo County pooled investment fund. You were at 40% after talking with staff. It was because you couldn't really get out of that without financial loss, and so you left it in there, and then you amended that after the fact. The rest of that document is the required communication. We had no disagreements with management. We had no unusual items to report to you, and I just want to thank Keith and Darlene for all their help putting this CAFER together. It's quite a bit of work.
Thank you very much, David. So I just wanted to elaborate on our auditor's findings, as he just summarized with you earlier. As he mentioned, for the cable enterprise fund, as a significant deficiency, I've already talked a little bit about how staff are planning to address this. With Sandeep and his leadership, we've developed a new business plan, right, which articulates focusing on higher-margin business, which I've already talked about earlier. There have been many procedural and process improvements related to many of the existing expenditures through the renegotiation of existing contracts and minimizing and reducing costs wherever necessary, focusing on higher-margin business and implementing a new rate card recently, and the extensive planning that is underway for the eventual implementation of a fiber-to-the-home network if funding is identified and made available. Through those efforts, staff are planning to address the financial issues in the cable enterprise over time. And then, as David mentioned earlier, through the investment policy that was revised and Council adopted back in November of 2019, where we adjusted the allocation targets for the various investment options that we currently invest our funds in, we will not have an audit finding on that in the future. We have addressed that through your adoption of the revised investment policy, so that will no longer be an issue. The other report that's required, an action for City Council, is the Measure A report. This is in compliance with the San Mateo County Measure A Funds for local transportation purposes. The Measure A report included $1.5 million of assets, and $1.6 million of those assets were spent on various transportation programs. The city has complied with all requirements of that funding source with the county. So then finally, our request to Council this evening is to adopt a resolution accepting the city's CAFER and the Measure A Fund Report on Compliance for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2019. And before I open it up for Council questions, I do want to take an opportunity to recognize staff really in all departments, and particularly in the Finance Department, that have spent really thousands of hours working to make sure that we, that we follow all of the city's policies and procedures, administrative, financial, purchasing, and all of the hours spent in working with our auditor and preparing this extensive financial document. It's, it takes a lot of time and a lot of patience and a lot of review, and so I really want to congratulate and thank the many staff that worked on this over the course of the year. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene. Thank you. Keith, thank you. Questions, comments from Council? Anyone?
Okay. So I just want to say I'm really excited about the CalPERS conversation that's going on and the potential for setting up a trust. It's very proactive. I also just wanted to state that I really appreciate the transparency around the findings and what the city's doing to improve the findings. And overall, this is my first night on the Council, but Keith, I have been watching your work, and I really appreciate you being here in San Bruno. Your team is excellent, your reports are excellent, so thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from Council?
No questions, but great job on the report, as always, so thank you.
Marty?
You know, I have to concur with that. I mean, Keith, you're doing an excellent job, and your staff is following through, and I appreciate when we ask questions that you get back to us, and it is some good news on this unfunded pension liability. The way I look at it, I think as maybe our City Manager explained it to me at one point, was it's kind of like your mortgage. You know, it's overwhelming at first, but when you see it on a graph and that you see that it's, we are paying for it, and 2042, is that what the, that was the year? 43, okay. Plus or minus six months. It's, it makes you feel better as a councilman, and I hope that, Councilwoman too, I hope that makes the public feel that it's being addressed, and I'm interested in that plan. At a Council of Cities meeting, we did discuss that, and I'm really grateful that we're looking towards that. I am a little concerned about the cable department, and I understand the plan there. I recall in the budget that we were hoping that we were going to be net positive with that fund, but I was hoping to get a little bit more explanation on, it does mention the $1.2 or $3 million for the depreciation of the equipment, but... Looking forward to how we're going to implement this fiber system, and we're still on track, and I believe we'll have a plan, financing plan at some point, and I know there's a lot of things that are happening right now that I'll have to be patient to wait a little bit longer with, but if maybe we can have a little bit of discussion on how that is rolling out, because I know a lot of work has been done. that is rolling out, because I know a lot of work has been done to reduce costs and to, to manage contracts.
Sure. Jevon, city manager. The fund, yes, is negative, and yes, really what's underpinning the long-term strategy is the fiber-to-the-home, and we are still working on financing mechanisms for that because that is the linchpin for the success and the future of the business, and it aligns with where customers are going, and it's a more stable platform by which to provide internet and TV and telephone services to this community. And so finding those funds to reinvest in that enterprise is critical, and you're absolutely right. The last 12 months has really been geared toward, I sort of have a statement that what do you do when you find yourself in a hole, you stop digging. And that was our game plan for the cable enterprise over the last 12 months, was to figure out ways to renegotiate contracts and get our costs lower, and the council knows in that our budget presentations, we talked a lot about that. Have we renegotiated a lot of contracts to get our costs lower, and actually have brought down the price point of some of our services. And the good news is that even though we're bringing down the price point, we're actually making more money, because the enterprise makes its money off the margin, right? We have to pay Fox, HBO, Showtime, KTVU, just like all the other big cable providers. So on the rate we negotiate with them and the rate we sell it at, we make our money on the margin. And the goal to stay in business, and when we rolled out that business plan, what was really underpinning that was three prongs. One, making sure that we have the right people to run the enterprise, and I, and I think we do. Two, making sure that we had a business plan that was appropriate and aligned to where the future of the technology was going, and I think we do. And the third was having a public good for staying in the business, because we don't have to provide cable services. And that public good was we know that with the fiber-to-the-home project, we can provide cable and internet services at a lower price point to this community than the national competitors. And, and that, that is really underpinning that. It's really having a public benefit to stay in the business. But again, what's underpinning that is progressing towards financing the $12.3 million it's going to cost to do the fiber-to-the-home project, and we are continuing to work, to work on that. That is very much on staff's work plan, and hopefully within 2020, we have a way forward on that.
Just one last thing, real quick. So in previous council meetings, and Councilman Salazar, are these, these fund amounts appropriate, like dealing with inflation, and when would we ever look at, and maybe it's not now, but but I'm, it's an opportunity to talk about it, to making sure that that amount of money in those reserves is the right amount. And I think we talked a little bit about it before, about inflation and how they were set many years ago, and we probably should increase those reserves, because a dollar in 2000 isn't the same as a dollar in 2020. So I just kind of wanted to toss that back up here and maybe have staff kind of address that a little bit.
And I think, Keith, you have an answer.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. It came up with Councilmember Salazar during the budget process, and so I would like to articulate that our reserves are set using a few different methodologies. For our largest reserve, the general fund reserve, it is set at 25% of general fund expenditures. So by nature of the methodology, it does increase as our general fund budget increases. So, and we, we are and have been and are planning to continue to achieve that 25% target. The other reserves are a dollar threshold, so $3 million for the emergency disaster reserve fund, for example. And so funds like that, we might consider a potential dollar change or a different methodology to calculate the reserve. I will say that the, our reserve policy is rather aggressive in wanting to retain adequate reserves compared to our general fund total budget, when looking at what other cities' reserve policies are or what government standards also recommend. And so when comparing to that, ours are either in line or sometimes maybe a little potentially more aggressive.
If I, if I can, through the mayor, the other thing we talked around, around our last budget season was establishing reserve policies for our enterprise funds and our non-general fund funds. And so we will be doing that in this budget season, is looking at reserves for those funds as well. The other thing that is connected to reserves, and I couldn't help when I looked at page 133 of the audit, that lists our top 40 business license taxpayers, and one of the businesses that are, is on there is Sears. And we know that Sears is closing, and so as we enter into our budget times, the projection of that will factor into our budget, and the loss of those business license tax dollars and those sales tax dollars. And so the city staff are working with the building owner to look at repositioning that asset, but it is something that will affect us, and that's why, part of the reason why you have a reserve too, because there are economic cycles that hit us due to no action we have taken. And when you look into what your reserve policy should be, you oftentimes factor in what are the things that can affect you? So where are your liabilities? Are you, is your budget heavily dependent on sales tax, and do you have a lot of car dealers? And if people stop buying cars, how much does that affect you? And so we very much take those things into consideration.
For me, on the equipment reserves, when was the last time we reviewed that? I know since I've been here, we went through it, kind of cleaned it up, took things off the assets list that we were, we were reserving for that no longer were there, adjusted those.
So through the chair, through our annual budget process, that is the time where we at least annually revisit our equipment reserve documentation, so the list of equipment and vehicles that we plan to, to refresh or to replace after its useful life. We do that at least annually, but during the operating year, as we actually purchase or plan to purchase items that are on that equipment reserve that are budgeted, we will update our lists accordingly, so that it's sort of an ongoing, maintained, managed process. And every year during the, during the budget process, council will, will receive a list of equipment replacements or new equipment purchases and vehicles for your consideration during the year. And as I reported during the budget process, if you were, we conducted a more thorough analysis during the fiscal year 1920 budget process, where we tried to understand more collectively whether or not we are, we are adequately funding the, the planned useful-life replacement for our, for most of those city's assets. And so we have a better handle on sort of where we are now and where we need to go as we move through the budget processes here going forward.
Right. Thank you.
And in the next budget cycle, because we can look at increasing our funding for equipment, the other thing that we talked about was fixture furniture and equipment, and having a designated reserve, because oftentimes we reserve for the big equipment, the vehicles and the equipment, but when you total up all of the chairs and desks and things that we have in the city, a lot of cities establish a, what's called an FFNE, fixtures, furnitures, and equipment, because that could be a very large number when you put those all together. And so we did talk at budget time about the desire to establish that. You know, you can establish the fund, but sort of growing the economic base of the city is what we also need, so we will have the funds to fund those reserves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? There is a request for a, to adopt a resolution on this. Any action?
Through the chair, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on.
I don't know if we have any.
Anybody from the public want to talk about money? Dollars? Okay. Let's go back to actions from council.
Through the chair, I will adopt, I move that we adopt the resolution, accepting the CAFER and the Measure A fund report.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice, Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.